Central School District Board of Education meeting for March 7, 2022. Can I have a motion to go into executive session for, to discuss YCT contractual negotiations under the Taylor law?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for March 7, 2022. Will we please stand for a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence from armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start with our first public comment, which is on agenda-related items. I'm going to read before we, this, we have public comment. So although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. Speakers were asked to sign up on the appropriate sign-up sheet with their full name, address, and email. If your name is not legible and we can't read it, you will not be called upon. All comments must be addressed to the board directly, not to the audience. Our policy 1230, public participation at board meetings, clearly states, "We do not allow discussions involving or using the name and situ, or situation of an individual district personnel or students. Anyone who speaks in violation of our policy will immediately give up their right to continue to speak." Speakers are expected to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Anyone using abusive or inflammatory language, using offensive language, or in any way causing a disruption will give up their right to speak. Members of the audience are expected to maintain civility and respect for the views of others. We do not allow calling out, clapping, or other disruptions from the audience. We will be tracking each speaker's time, and towards the end of your three minutes, we will warn you to conclude. If you fail to abide by the three-minute speaking time, we will turn off the microphone. Our first public comment period is 15 minutes in length. Each person has the opportunity to speak for up to three minutes about topics that are on tonight's agenda. We will not be extending this first public comment period. Our first person is Vishnu Patel.
Thank you, everybody.
Good evening.
Superintendent of the school district, Dr. Hatter, the board member. This place looks different than when I was here last time, so thank you. Wonderful to be here, and now you have not to use a mask, but I, I was, I was collecting the bootchips, so I used my mask today, you know. So let me just say, I just, I have one, just one or two, just the simplest thing in reference to the, is the energy. Solar, first solar cell was invented right here in New Jersey, and then a second was here at IBM. And IBM has accept, you know, started a project for five megawatts. And I hope that, you know, we use something like this in our school district to save energy, because the sun is going to last for another few billion years, and other thing may go away. So I want to thank you for your service, because I did my part, now you do your part. Thank you, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Paul Moskowitz.
Hello, Paul Moskowitz, Yorktown.
Could you move closer to the microphone, please?
Is this better?
Yes, thank you.
I'm representing Yorktown 100. This is a group whose aim is to reduce the total carbon footprint of the town of Yorktown 5% a year, for every year until it's down to zero. So what I'm speaking about is facilities at the Yorktown School District. In particular, there are a lot of roofs on the buildings, and these can be put to use for mounting solar panels, solar panels to produce electricity. I'll point out that the town of Yorktown has passed a solar law not too long ago, which has spurred a lot of growth in this area. Just a few examples, the town is installing solar panels at the Granite Knolls parking lot. IBM is doing the same thing at the IBM parking lot. The JV Mall, without any prompting, has been putting solar panels on the roof of the JV Mall. These people, these organizations are not doing this for the goodness of humanity, they're doing it because it's profitable. And I would hope that the Yorktown School District could look into the possibilities. There are a lot of roof area, there's a lot of roof area available for solar energy capture. I suggest that we don't just go headlong into this, but form a committee of people who have expertise, especially those people who know how to count dollars, and see whether this is going to be a profitable enterprise. I'll point out that, that recently, many of the automobile manufacturers have been putting an emphasis on solar vehicles. GM is spending billions of dollars to build a factory. Ford is advertising their F-150 pickup, which, besides being a truck, can power your whole house. So I suggest that we consider, as part of this committee's work, charging stations for the vehicles that are parked in the parking lots at the school district facilities. I think this also will add to the profitability, and maybe we could even afford to have a podium for speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jane Killian.
You hear me?
Can you? Yeah, there you go, sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
Good evening, Superintendent Hatter and members of the Yorktown School Board. Mary Jane Killian, 32-year resident of the Yorktown School District. And I'm also here tonight to speak on the issue of having the board consider creating what I'm starting to call a climate initiative task force that would study the ways that our school could significantly lower their carbon, their carbon footprint. I realize that the district has looked into this issue to some extent, but I think there are some recent developments that would, giving reasons for the, giving a closer, more focused look. Some of the recent developments that would argue for the school districts to take a closer look would be, there's been increasingly dire warnings about the effects of climate change and the urgency with which we need to act to save the planet, and the growing awareness that this is our children's future. And at the same time, there's been a dramatic increase in the efficiency of solar panels, and the reduction of cost, and an increase in federal and state incentives. Also, precipitous increases, most recently, in the cost of heating oil and electricity, and significant advances in the technology with geothermal and air source heat pumps. So I am a retired teacher, so I would finally add that I tend to still look at things from that perspective, and to think about students. And I see having, or trying to create a task force like this as an opportunity to involve our students. Many of them are very aware and very concerned and very involved already. It is their future, and I think that Yorktown could be a leader in this growing movement. And I think creating this climate initiative task force is an action that we could take right now, and together with our young people, you know, have a more long-lasting and positive effect. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Larry Killian.
Husband, sorry, husband of Mary Jane. Our daughter graduated from Yorktown High School in 1996. Every time you pick up a paper, you read of another solar installation. It's simple why. It's cheaper to make your own electricity rather than, rather than to buy it, and it's much better for the environment. Also, it's much cheaper and much better for the environment not to burn fossil fuels. So once in every 20 years, you get an opportunity to replace a boiler and a heating system. Let's make a plan when that comes, when that opportunity comes to replace the boiler with geothermal and air source heat technology. Many schools are already embarking on this journey. The White Plains School, Post Road School, has geothermal and solar panels. All of the schools in the River towns are into solar on their roofs. So for example, on December 20th, Hastingson Hudson signed a lease with a company to put solar panels on their Hillside Elementary School, and they're going to get $45,000 a year. But if you buy your solar panels, they can, it can be a lot cheaper. A Suma School District is using 5 million, 5 million kilowatt-hours of electricity a year, and paying 10 cents per kilowatt at a cost of $500,000, around what we paid last year. If you got a $500,000 bond at 2% interest, the cost to repay that in five years would be $9,000 a month. But the solar panels are not just sitting on your roof. They're making perhaps 5% of your electricity. That's going to reduce your monthly payment from 9,000 to 7,000 a month. And on that $500,000 bond with interest, you're actually only going to pay back $409,000. So these numbers are just guesstimates. But we would suggest that you form a task force to figure out how we can get to carbon-neutral by 2040 or sooner.
10 seconds, please.
Save the planet and save money. And thank you for your service in these past very difficult two years.
Thank you. Trish Rothberg.
Good evening, folks. Trish Rothberg, 16-year resident, son graduated last year. You guys are amazing, and you've had a tough couple of years. I have missed a couple of meetings, but I've been watching. I am tonight here in support of Yorktown 100 and trying to go carbon-neutral. I think putting a task force together would be wonderful. I think you guys have a lot on your plate between the pandemic and everything that's been happening in the districts and districts across the country. I applaud all of your efforts to really be in this time right now, which seems so intense for school districts, and I thank all of you for your service. Larry and Mary Jane are wonderful people, and, and very bright, and I think this task force would be wonderful for the community. That's all I'm going to say. There's other people that want to talk, but thank you again, and I could list all the reasons why, but I'm just saying the same stuff that they're saying. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everybody who signed up for our first public comment period. Because we have the facilities budget coming up, we will address what needs to be addressed at that point. Okay, Dr. Hatter? All right. We're going to move on to the superintendent's update.
Good evening, everyone. It is great of you to join us. We have changed the venue for this meeting, and just the way this board is, I really appreciate and admire. Our high school drama club was practicing for this weekend's performance of Fiddler on the Roof, which we're looking forward to. We're looking forward to giving live theater back and continuing live theater in our schools, and having our students be able to put on a performance in front of their families and friends and have that opportunity, as they should. They needed the gym this, they needed the auditorium this week. So when I presented the Board of Education with, "Well, they will move, because you are the Board of Education, and if you have to meet in the auditorium, we can make alternate arrangements," and without missing a beat, this board just said, "No, we're going to move. We move. The children stay in their space rehearsing." So I really appreciate our board for that. So that is why we're here at the Brookside cafeteria. Our students, for anyone who has a child in the play, you know that your child is there at the high school auditorium practicing, rehearsing for this weekend's performance. Speaking of Fiddler on the Roof, we have a 7:00 PM performance Friday evening, that's March 11th. We have a 7:00 PM performance Saturday, March 12th, and a 2:00 o'clock performance Sunday, March 13th. That's the one that I plan on going to. And it sure to be great, and I really hope that our community can come out and support our students and really give them an audience to perform to. With regard to a couple of other acknowledgements for our students, my congratulations to Sydney Leitner. Sydney finished sixth place in the state track and field championships, cross-country championships. So wonderful for Sydney to compete at such a high level and perform so well. We're proud of her. Our high school cheerleading team finished state, third in the states in Rochester at their competition, and we're just so proud of our high school cheer team. We had two wrestlers perform at a really high level in their state competition, so we had a gymnast go off to the state competition and do really well. So our students are really thriving in so many regards, and we're so proud of them, and so proud to be able to provide continued support of our students. In addition, this past weekend was a, well, you know, before I go off away from our students, I'll come back to our students. Our middle school science Olympiad team finished third in their competition this weekend. So they have qualified for the next level of competition, and we're just so proud of what our young scientists are doing. There's an upcoming collaboration in our engineering program between Crompton and our high school engineering program, so we're looking forward to those opportunities for our students. Some really, really exciting things happening in our schools. And right here at Brookside, in this room, we held two wonderful writing celebrations, and we had parents in to read their children's writing, and it was just a great, great event for our third grade, for many of our third grade students. And I want to just acknowledge Mrs. Amerling, who's in the back of the room. She oversaw both celebrations, and she graciously opened up this facility for the board and for our administrative team this evening. So my thanks to Mrs. Am, Mrs. Amerling for that. We, this past school weekend, we hosted the Section 1 Basketball Championships. That was a really big event in the region, and it's bigger than just Westchester County. The Section 1 Basketball Championships encompass 67 school districts across Section 1. And it was wonderful to hear the complimentary remarks of those who visited the facility, how beautiful the high school gymnasium is, how well-run and how well-organized the event was, and we had thousands and thousands of people visiting the campus. So my thanks to our athletic director, Rob Barrett, for really orchestrating the entire weekend. And it was 12 day, 12 hours a day, each day. So my thanks to Mr. Barrett, my thanks to our staff who worked that event. I know Mr. Rosen was there for 12 hours on Saturday and 12 hours on Sunday. Mr. Verbois had a big role in coordinating the parking and all of the logistical details outside. My thanks to the supervisors who work the games, our athletic trainer, our administrators who came out, certainly the Yorktown Police Department, who really came out in force and made sure that it was a really well-run and safe event for everyone who was in attendance. So a good weekend all around in that regard. And then a couple of other items. We released the calendar for the 2022-23 school year. The board approved it at their last meeting, and last week I shared that. So that's been posted to our website. It's also available in my last update from March 4th to the community. There was, the eighth grade PTA is trying to raise money for a end-of-year dance that our middle schoolers do, our eighth graders do. So I volunteered a prize to be raffled off of that superintendent for a day. So we have a third grader, actually from Brookside, who won the award. He has already told me his agenda for the day, which is to alter our lunch menu, because he'd like to see some more variety included at Brookside Mohansick and the elementary schools. So I look forward to that, and certainly will ask him to attend a board meeting as well. With the state tests, just for a moment, those are upcoming, so I'm just going to ask Mrs. O'Shea to take a moment to provide our community with the, on the 3 through 8 New York State assessments.
So you may recall that in 2020, the New York State assessments for grades 3 through 8 in ELA and math were canceled. And last year, we were in a remote hybrid model, and the state decided that districts only needed to administer the first part of each of the assessments, not both. So we really have had two disrupted years, and we are now going back to 2019 format when, before the pandemic. So we will have the grades 3 through 8 ELA assessments on March 29th and 30th, and we'll have the math assessments for grades 3 through 8 on April 26th and 27th. Each test is two days. It's estimated that each testing session on those days would be between 60 and 90 minutes for the students, depending on the grade. And just to add, a letter will be going out from me to all parents in grades 3 through 8 this week.
Very good, thank you. Finally, what I'll share, before we turn it over to our budget presentation, and our budget presentation this evening talks about general support, employee benefits, and our facilities budget is also presented within the scope of the presentation that Mr. Cole will deliver. We'll also be talking about capital reserve and extending the capital reserve, so there'll be a separate additional presentation for that as well, that Mr. Cole and I will, will deliver. Mr. Cole will lead the presentation, and I'll certainly contribute to it as well. But before we go there, I just want to update the board and our community on two items. First, the Assistant Superintendent dual search that we're running. So as you all know, Mr. Cole and Mrs. O'Shea are retiring at the end of the school year. I wish it weren't the case, but they are. And we're in the process of recruiting. Thus far, our consultants, we've worked, we're working with Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs to identify suitable replacements. I don't know if, that seems almost oxymoronic at this point, but we're certainly proceeding with the search. The consultants have held two virtual forums for our community, and there was an online forum that was open for members of our community to post their feedback and share their feedback. I've also posted the timeline to our website, and that's available for our community to review. So the feedback that we gained through the virtual and the digital forums will be, will be used to craft the posting. The posting, I anticipate, will open this coming Monday, provided that we hit our target dates, which I anticipate we will. And we'll be accepting applications for both positions, middle of the month, toward the end of the month, and then continuing on with the process as outlined on our webpage. And finally, on the book review, I wanted to give an update to our board and to the community. So the board last met on Monday, March 7th. Monday, Tuesday, March 8th, all of the books were available in the library on the following morning. So the books continue to be available in the library. Five of the eight, I want to clarify, were always available digitally. The, just the hard copies were not available, so there was never a lapse in the availability of five of the eight titles. And then all of the titles are there. The committee continues to review the books. We found alternate means to review the books. Some have checked out books from the library, the public library, some have purchased them on their own, and in some instances, we've had people kindly let us borrow their copies of the book, and we appreciate that very much. And I anticipate, I would say, a couple weeks until we have the first determination. We've identified parents, we've met with parents who are on the committee. There was a staggering of when the committee convened to when we involved the parent member, because the committee had to read eight books. The parent has to read one, or the community member has to read one book. So there, there was a natural staggering of when we began the introducing parent, community members into the process. But we've had those meetings, and we continue to move forward on that. So I just wanted to provide the board with an update as to where we are currently. That concludes the updates that I have for the board. Some really exciting things are happening in our school district, and it, with, with regard to the masks, I believe prior to, at last meeting, the masks were still required. So this is our first meeting in a mask optional setting, and I want to share that our students have really responded the way that I thought they would. There have been no reports of mistreatment, or bullying, or inappropriate comments toward those who made their own decision, whether it was to wear a mask or not. And, and I knew our students would do that, and I knew our families would do that, and our staff would do that. Thus far, all of the reports that I have heard have been nothing but positive, and people have been very understanding that it's a personal decision that, that everyone is making. So I just wanted to report back, because at our last meeting, masks were still required. So although the sample size is relatively small, we've only had about four days to look at this, the, thus far, the data that I'll share with you are no reports, that have risen to my attention, of hurtful comments or any type of behavior that, that would be anything less than respectful of each person's decision. So that concludes the updates that I wanted to share with our community. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Cole, who will deliver the next installment in our series of budget presentations. And for members of our community, please know that all of the presentations that we have are not only available in the videos, the archived videos that we have, but they're also available on our website, under the budget section of our website in the business office. So if you do miss a presentation, or if you want to catch up on presentations, they're available not only in the Board of Education meeting videos, but they're also available online on our website. Mr. Cole?
Thanks very much, Dr. Hatter, and good evening, everyone. Tonight, we will review the fifth public information session in our seven-part series. In the following slides, we will discuss the general support and employee benefits sections of our budget. The general support section also includes the facilities department operation. The Board of Education section of the budget includes the office of the district clerk, as well as the mandated cost of the annual vote and elections. We continue to use the bold software system and automated means of tracking and controlling the voter rolls. The cost of this software is captured through our BOCs cooperative, rendering it subject to state aid in the subsequent year. The manner in which the annual vote will take place, in person or by mail, as was the case a couple of years ago, will be determined this year, but we believe everything will be in person, as we see, as mask mandates have been lifted. These sections encompass the office of the superintendent and the entire financial operation of the school district. In the finance section, money is budgeted for the settlement of employee contracts across the breadth of the school district. Central administration and finance includes the equivalent of seven employees. The contractual expense includes the section of the fully integrated accounting system called Envision, the cost of our outsourced Medicaid services, educational data cooperative bidding services, outsourced independent asset management services, and the cost of IRS-compliant administration of the district's deferred compensation plan. One clerical position has been reassigned to the curriculum department next year as part of that reorganization. Two more areas related to finance that capture the cost of auditing, both internal and external, and the cost of the claims auditor, all of which are unfunded state mandates. The cost of the treasurer's office and legal counsel services are also represented here. Human resources is home to three employees. All of the costs associated with recruiting, benefits management, and employee relations are captured here. The special items section of the budget, which is the second section on this chart, is where we find liability insurance costs, the cost of our Xerox workstations throughout the district, and some of the BOCs-related administrative costs. BOCs-related administrative costs. The liability insurance costs include the general liability coverage, crime coverage, and in, and the fuel storage tank insurance premiums. We entered into a lease agreement for our Xerox workstations in 2018-19. A new lease will be executed, executed for the 22-23 school year. The cost of document digitization increases as we restart those efforts in the post-COVID era. This line item had been eliminated in a budget reduction effort in 2020. Note the last two items on this page are related to the BOCs budget. We are part of a BOCs consortium made up of 18 school districts in our region. These costs, administrative costs of the BOCs operation and the BOCs capital project costs, are a portion to each district based on a formula that includes primarily assessed evaluations in each district. Now we'll move along to discuss the Facilities section of the budget. Just a brief description and summary of our school buildings under this umbrella. Our French Hill Elementary School is still idle but being leased out to 11 individual tenants. The school district's wrestling program is located in the building, and we retain a series of rooms for storage purposes. We currently generate revenue from tenants sufficient to cover routine maintenance for the building and the campus, and provide a modest positive cash flow that reduces the tax rate. The operations of the physical plant includes costs related to all staff salaries, heating and cooling, energy costs, and all of the materials and supplies necessary to support operations. The cost of snow removal operations, providing access to outside community groups, and the oversight of the French Hill School Building, idled since 2010, are also captured here. The heating-fuel contingency is being restored based on the volatility of the oil market. This item had been removed from the 2020 budget as part of the overall cost-reduction effort. In general, the huge spike in energy costs is putting pressure on every cost element that is dependent in any measure on fuel. The upkeep codes reflect the large amount of work we're now able to do with in-house labor in the form of carpentry, HVAC systems, plumbing, electrical work, and site projects. We also utilize outside contractors obtained through bids and requests for proposals to perform more in-depth work on heating and cooling systems. Items of note include the cost of re tubing one boiler at the high school, and increased BOCs costs related to water testing. In total, the entire General Support section of our budget is estimated to increase by just over a half a million dollars, or 5.56 percent. We'll now discuss the Benefits section of the budget. These costs listed here are not allocated to the individual areas of the budget. In 2022-23, total benefit costs will rise by just over $1.6 million, or approximately 8 percent. The primary cost drivers are the pension system contributions, an unfunded mandate, which increases by just over $200,000 net, and health insurance costs estimated to increase by $1.2 million. The district has established a reserve fund to help mitigate the rising cost of the pension system. We are asking the Board of Education to once again consider contributing a total of 100, of $1 million, $500,000 from the ERS Reserve, and $500,000 from the TRS Reserve, to directly reduce the cost of these two items, providing tax relief as a result. Next week, we will present the largest portion of the budget, Instruction, General Education, Special Education, and Technology. And we'll be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Before I get to the, the board questions, do we, can we talk a little bit about the solar and what we've done in the past? I don't know if Dennis wants to join us. We've talked about geothermal. We've talked a lot of, about some of these items.
Sure.
I don't know whether, you know.
Yeah, we'll ask Mr. Verbois to come up anyway, because he'll be able to answer any of the other questions the board has. Dennis, just speak.
Hit the, watch that button. Yeah, just go to the right. But yes, we have looked at, oh, hi, Dennis, I'm sorry. We have looked at solar, solar panel installation, both on our roofs, on our campus, and we've even investigated areas off-campus to be able to put solar arrays up. And we did bring one presentation before the board years ago with a solar company from upstate New York that the, the board ultimately declined to participate in. But we've looked at this in a variety of different ways. And Dennis, perhaps you can provide more detail, but we looked at the, the available space on our roofs, the impact on the roofs themselves in terms of what it might do to the warranties of the roofs. And we looked at using about a three-acre array on our campus, for which we didn't really have the room, and that's what drove us off-campus to a section of the BOCs property here in Yorktown. Dennis, do you have anything?
No, you pretty hit, you hit the highlights. It was a company called Solar City, and it was roughly, I'd say, five years ago. So, yeah, they went quickly from the roofs to solar arrays on ground, looking for property, and that kind of pushed them to the BOCs property. We just don't have a lot of available space. You'd have to clear trees with the property that we have to do, to do that.
Or, our roofs are very full. They're not flat, like a, a, a normal roof. If you see somebody's home roof, it's a flat space. We have a lot of equipment on our roofs. There was not a lot of area, real estate, I would say, to put solar panels. Is that correct?
You, you are correct. And, and most recently, with these HVAC units, just this past summer, we put on our high school gym two 80-ton HVAC units with ductwork to open the space beneath it. We're doing the same this summer at the, the middle school. And in each of these elementaries, we have heating, ventilating units that we'll be adding cooling coils. So that does occupy some of our roofs, ductwork, and mechanical equipment that we have to get to, to service.
And what have we done as far as talking about geothermal and trying to retrofit our buildings for that?
Well, the, the one, most of the time that we've talked to our professionals about geothermal is with regard to new construction. Would you agree, Dennis, that you have, retrofitting is incredibly expensive?
Absolutely. I've been here now 18 years, and just before I came, the district invested a lot of monies in these terminal unit ventilators that you all hear about. So they're, they're roughly coming on 20 years of age, and typical lifespan is 30-plus the years. These terminal units would have to be replaced with a geothermal system, because you're, you, you focus on pumps. We don't have the pumping system for these unit ventilators. So boilers are one part of it as well. In my tenure, we've replaced every boiler system with, with the exception of this school, which we're hopefully we do in the summer. We did it 10 years ago, replaced the burners, so we are just replacing boilers at a cost of about $100,000 per boiler, two boilers. So geothermal is not just, you know, sticking piping in the ground. It's a, it's a hefty expense on pumping systems and tying it into your boiler system.
What have we done to reduce our carbon footprint?
Well, we do have efficient boilers, so we have state-of-the-art boilers for all schools, but this one, they've, they've been done in the last 10, 15 years. So the water tube boilers, they're very efficient. The drawback is we rely on fuel oil. This is the only building in the district where we have another, yeah, we have a gas, so we can go back and forth between gas and oil. We have been running on gas this year because we found it cheaper than the oil.
Well, you've also done, over the years, the, the lighting, more efficient lighting. Done, every room in the district is on the automatic light switches. We have several hybrid vehicles now in our fleet and facilities, electric vehicles for security personnel. So to the extent that we can, we integrate a lot of those.
Yeah, there, there have been, there are other mechanisms outside of solar panels and geothermal, and I understand that, and that's all important, and it's something that I'm sure we'll continue that conversation on. But that's not the only mechanism, and that's not the only consideration. So the high-efficiency lighting, the timers, the sensors, the programmable thermostats, the insulation that we've done, the caulking around the windows to keep hot air out in the summer and cold air out in the winter, and, and vice versa along the seasons. So those are, the recycling programs, all of those other things that a school ought to be doing are certainly in place here. And I'm sure there are a few steps that we've taken that I've left out. But in terms of, so, we were in the gym. I'll share with you. We were in the gym. We had about 1,000, maybe 1,500 people in it. And if you were watching last night's broadcast, I would ask you to just forward right ahead on Local Live to the Poughkeepsie Lord's game. Our lights went out. Our lights went out in the gym. I, I am, in all seriousness, our lights went out in the gym, and the officials had to stop play because our sensors had not, there was a sensor in one of the corners of the room. Someone was standing in front of it for a long period of time, and so it tricked. Our, our systems worked so well that the entire lighting system went out in our gym in the middle of a championship basketball game. So that was the only hiccup that we had during the course. And Mr. Rosen, you were there, and you remember that. It was right, I didn't want to say it was you. But, so we do have, in spaces like the gymnasium, where you can burn a lot of electricity on lights, we've upgraded to LED, which is so much more energy-efficient than what we'd been using prior. And one of the other things is looking at LED lighting throughout, because that is a big driver of our electrical costs, our lights. When children are here, the lights are on, and that's something that we also need to have as part of the conversation moving forward as well. And I know that we have investigated that, and we continue to look into that, that technology. So that's just one other element I would add to the conversation.
And as, as we meet with Steering Committee and we, we come up with the projects, it's always, what is the most efficient? And I know it would be lovely to say we can just go 100% carbon-neutral, and it's very hard when you have buildings that were built in the 50s and the 60s, and they really aren't capable of doing that. But we do try. And I think, you know, like, for instance, the gyms are getting air conditioning this summer. We also added in retrofitting the lights in there, even though we've replaced them not all that long ago. We're retrofitting them because now there's new technology. Now there's LEDs that, that can go in there and be more efficient. So we are doing where we can. I wish we could say more, and I wish we could do more, but, you know, we, is there more we can do? There's always more we can do. I know that.
We can keep the conversation going. I think that's the important element here, to keep the conversation going and, and look for opportunities where we can. Not only is it cost-effective, especially in this climate, it's also the responsible approach for us.
And, you know, we do do a lot of things. Dennis, you do the energy throw-down, right?
We do.
With the schools to build awareness and things like that. So it is a constant conversation.
Can you speak, Dennis, about the, Dennis, can you speak to the energy, we call it the energy throw-down affectionately here, but can you speak to that?
Sure, sure. So it started, I want to say, 12 years ago, and every April right through Earth Day in May, we, we task all our schools, they take it as a challenge, to reduce our carbon footprint, and a lot of it is turning off electricity when not in use, but even, even the paper, the recycling. And I, I can keep track of it with the electricity bills, and I must say, in that one month, you do see some savings. They're, they're really aggressive in that one month. So they have fun with it, and we give an award on Earth Day to the, the school with the biggest savings. And I base it on square footage, so it's not always the same school winning year after year. So they have fun with it.
Okay. Now we can go to board questions. Lisa, do you have a question on the entire budget presentation?
Yes, I do have a question. But while we have Mr. Verbois here, I just want to thank you for all of the hard work you and your team put in. I think a lot of people came to our campus over the weekend that had never been here before, and I heard from a lot of outside district people how beautiful and clean and neat our facilities were. And I know that wasn't just this weekend, that's all of the time, but especially this weekend when there were thousands of people there. That's a huge compliment to you and your team, so thank you for making us look good.
Yes, of course. Thank you.
I have a question, Tom, about the digitization.
Sure.
What are we digitizing? What have we done? Where are we going? What is that?
In, in years past, the pre-pandemic, we had spent a good deal of time, energy, and money digitizing student records, employee records, and things of that nature. We had taken this money out of the budget two years ago in an effort to reduce the 2020 budget in the midst of COVID. But we now, we still have, believe it or not, some payroll records that are on microfiche, and this money will be spent to digitize those records because they have to be kept in perpetuity. So that's the next project. We're also applying for a grant, and if we receive the grant, we'll expand the scope of what we're looking to do. But we hope to have everything digitized and be in a current state of just doing the current year's documents going forward.
So once we catch up with the past records, would this line item amount be reduced, do you think?
That line item, yes, will be reduced. This money is, is being used to digitize an incredible volume of information. But then it will become an annual thing, and the, and the amount of money will be far less.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure. I have a question, Tom, regarding the upkeep of the alarms. I would imagine that as the alarms get older, the upkeep would be more expensive. But I'm noticing that the cost of the upkeep is actually declining. What is the reason behind that?
Sure. No, that's a great observation. We actually, we had a service vendor for many years, Red Hawk. They changed over to ADT. So two years, we jumped on their central station monitoring service. So this budget is reflective of a, pretty much a rightsizing of that code. So these will be the prices we see going forward. They're much more equipped to do the central station monitoring, but we find them being an excellent vendor.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. Rashford?
I have a question, but before that, I, I want to give an update. I know we talked about energy and reducing our carbon footprint. So Senator Peter Harkman had hosted a call to talk about the zero-emission school buses. It was open to superintendents, board members. So he's looking at companies based out of either California or even in Canada. And I know this morning, he was able to actually get a demo bus for anyone that was interested to ride. I saw the pictures of that. So they're looking at things like power range, does it need to be charged during the day, cost effectiveness, all, all of that. So that's something that he's looking at. I did ask the question about what this would mean for us, where we use a transportation contractor and don't own our own fleet. He made a note of the question, so we'll, we'll wait for more info to follow. But I think there's some work being done at the, you know, at the state level in that regard, too. So my question is actually on health insurance. So, Tom, I know earlier in the budget cycle, I think we had expected the premiums would increase by about 6 percent, but tonight it looks like it's at about 8 percent, over $1 million. So can you give us some insight?
Sure. The, our school district belongs to a health insurance consortium that has 14 school districts in the, in the consortium. And that, that consortium gets together and votes on and sets rates. So earlier in the year, it set a rate of increase of about 6 percent in premiums, based on the experiences of the plan, what they saw as trends and so forth. Well, in the interim from when that initial rate had been set, they got another month or two worth of data points to coming in. And it was, in my opinion, in the, in an era when a lot of the COVID testing was going on. So the consortium team met a second time and considered increasing the rate by another 2 percent, which they did. Our school district didn't support that measure openly, but the majority of the consortium agreed to increase the rates an additional 2 percent. So for us, that was another quarter of a million dollars. So that's how the rate went from 6 to 8 percent.
And just to elaborate on that, as Mr. Cole said, our school district does get a seat at the table. We voted no on the increase, and we thought there were other options that could have been explored before a universal rate increase of this magnitude. So we thought that there were other options that the Health Insurance Consortium could have more strongly considered than imposing this increase.
Thank you.
Mike?
I'll finish your sentence. We got voted down, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Actually, I have a comment and then a question. With regard to reducing our carbon footprint and the steps that we've taken, I think we've done a lot. But I do think there's a lot more we can do. And I remember when we looked at the last company for solar, I believe, my numbers will be a little fuzzy, but it was somewhere around a $3 million layout for us, and their savings were going to be somewhere just shy of $100,000. us and their savings were going to be somewhere just shy of a hundred thousand dollars a year. And at the time, that did not make a lot of sense to the board, uh, for obvious reasons. But I know that things have changed. I know that technology has changed and I know that a lot of the programs have changed. So I do think it's something we need to revisit. Um, even if it's, uh, to the extent that we can't produce all of our electricity that we need, whatever we can produce and save, I think would be worth looking into. So, um, I for one would like to, not right now, but I would like to figure out a way to, you know, tackle some of those issues.
Might be a nice project to, um, include our engineering students in.
Yeah, I think that's a fantastic approach, um, to, you know, both include, uh, people from community and, and, and students for sure in how we look at things. So anyway, that's my comment. Uh, my question, um, for Mr. Cole is that, um, our, uh, TRS contribution this year is up significantly, uh, yet our ERS contribution is down significantly. Can you help us understand why there's a big difference there between the two?
Sure. The, the pension systems in, in the state of New York, the TRS, the teacher's retirement system dwarfs the ERS system in, in terms of the amount of funds available there. There's a direct correlation between the district's contribution on an annual basis and the relative performance of the stock market. Um, TRS had a target investment rate. And last year, uh, towards the end of last year, which was a pretty good year in terms of the equity markets, uh, they decided to lower their target rate into the future. So they took an opportunity, in my opinion, uh, to piggyback on a healthy market return and, uh, reduce their return estimate going forward, which increased our contribution as a school district. So that's the difference between the two. Typically you would have seen flat or even a reduction in the rate and, and that caused our rate to go up, our rate of contribution to go up. So that's why you see that effect in the budget.
Um, I have a question for Dennis, but before I do, I want to piggyback on what Lisa said because I did attend one of the games on Saturday and your facilities crew is second to none. It's, I watched them in between games. They were a well-oiled machine, cleaning everything so you wouldn't know anybody was in there before the next group of people came in. They were phenomenal. It was, it was wonderful. Our staff all over the district, whoever volunteered or, or worked those two days were amazing. And we've gotten a lot of compliments on how well it was run. And that's, I think, a lot to do with our staff. So I just want to thank everybody who did that.
And just to add, costs that were incurred by the district for that event are being reimbursed by section one as well. So I just wanted to make sure that that was noted for our community.
And every one of them is working today after they worked so hard this weekend. So thank you. Um, Dennis, can you talk about the, um, the re tubing of the boiler and, um, cause is, is that just a one-time cost? Is, is there more re tubing to do? What are we doing with the boilers?
Sure. So we, we put, uh, 50,000 or I think it was 50 or 55,000, uh, we got a proposal earlier this, um, heating season. Um, this would be for the high school. We have three Kewahney boilers. Um, they are our oldest boilers after the replacement of the Brookside boilers, um, this summer. They, they were done in nine, 1999. So they're coming on 20, 22 years and about this time, uh, water tube boilers, you, you get some decay in the water tubes. So this would be a re tubing of one of the three boilers. Um, the hope is to do each boiler in the next three years. So a similar cost for the next three years, but they can extend the life of these boilers another 10, 15 years.
But if we're talking 1999 boilers and we know that we're doing re tubing, is that something we might want to look at for more energy efficient boilers, um, for replacement? Or would we just want to keep putting in tubes and running boilers? I, I don't know. If a 1999 boiler is more or less efficient than one in 2022, I would assume it's less efficient.
Um, true. There's, there's a lot of truth to that, but you're talking about the D-size boilers for the high school, you know, an initial cost for a more energy efficient boiler would run you close, you know, four, $500,000, um, initial cost each one, and there's three of them.
Right. But is that something that, you know, is worth at least looking into to see cost versus return? Just a question.
Yeah, no, without a doubt, without a doubt.
Okay. I think it goes back to the comment that was made by one of the speakers, and that is that, uh, as we know, we're coming up on the end of some life expectancies, having a comprehensive strategy that says, here's what we're going to do when we get to that point. Um, and not making these individual decisions all the time about how we're going to handle, you know, this boiler and that boiler, but looking at the big picture and saying, okay, here's our schedule of when we feel we're going to have to replace things. Now how are we going to go about doing that? What's the best way to do it? So.
And I agree, but if you're looking, if you're looking at boilers and if Dennis is saying we're re tubing three boilers and we're doing one this year, you're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar outlay over three years, should we at least not start an investigation process?
Yeah.
Even if we start there and start to develop whatever, I, I just, I don't know. I, I just think it's worth a conversation with the engineers and the experts to help us.
Without a doubt.
Just a thought. Lisa?
Yeah. Um, Tom, I wanted to ask you about the liability insurance entry on the budget. I see that there's an increase of almost $33,000. What, what's causing that?
Well, there's two pieces to that. The, the, um, last year, the premium increases were not known to us until our budget had been completed. So, uh, a portion of that increase is catch up to last year's premium increase. Then there's a, a smaller premium increase in the current year, um, based on our loss experiences. So, uh, as we file claims, those claims go into the loss experience and they'll have an impact on some of our premiums. Uh, so that's what you're seeing there is a combination of those two things.
Okay, thank you.
Cheryl?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Rashmi?
Um, I have a question on the upkeep of the air conditioning, uh, systems. That seems to be, uh, that seems to be projected to go up for next year. What is driving that?
Right. So, um, that's an increase of roughly $7,500 for the maintenance of, we put split units in the high school gym three summers ago. Um, so we've added a lot of cooling components. So it's, it's just for, for upkeep, upkeep costs with all the cooling systems that we're adding.
Okay. So then after that year, sorry, one more.
Is that filter and maintenance? I'm just looking to filter and maintenance?
Oh, sure, sure. Yeah, fan motors, belts, um, pulleys, yeah.
Makes sense.
Mike?
Um, Tom, I know we talked about, you mentioned the, um, new copier lease. Um, how, how does that cost wise work out for us with regard to our existing printers and, and machines versus?
Well, the, um, it's a very good question and, um, we're very fortunate that our director of technology, Jen Forsberg, um, was on this one. She did a wonderful job. The, we're, we will be signing a new lease with Xerox, um, for copiers for the next several years. We're going to wind up at the end of the day with more units with a wider range of functionality than the ones we have currently, uh, and our price is not going to change. So it'll actually decrease slightly. Um, and some of the functionality is really important to us, including translation services and things like that on these units. So, um, it's, it's really a remarkable, uh, effort and, um, we're going to get a big bang for the bucks. We're excited about that.
Um, Tom, can you just talk about the BOSI's administrative charge?
Sure. BOSI's is, uh, I had mentioned before that we're members of the, the Northern Westchester, uh, Putnam Northern Westchester Health Consortium of 14 school districts. BOSI's is a, um, has 18 members, component members of its school, of the, uh, of the consortium in general, uh, the BOSI's in general. It's designed to, uh, provide shared services. They do a wonderful job with, uh, certain special education services and things of that nature. They're unmatched in some of the things they can do. They have administrative costs just like we do and they allocate those costs to school districts. So, um, of the 18 component districts, um, one of the largest variables in the allocation of those costs is the assessed valuations of the properties in each school district. So that line item that you see in our budget is our, our portion of a very larger administrative budget for the BOSI's operation.
So do we, we don't have any control over that?
We have no control over that. We get to, to vote, you know, some input into the budget process that BOSI's has, but just like any other school district, they have, um, they have fixed costs for benefits and things of that nature. There's also a capital component that's allocated in a similar manner, which is also in our budget, which is increasing because they have capital improvements to do on their own facilities. And because they don't, um, uh, assess, um, and appropriate monies as an individual entity, they allocate those to the school districts based on a very similar formula. So you'll see an allocation and an increase for that line item as well.
Okay. Anybody else got more questions?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Just, uh, if we could ask one, are you good with the increase, uh, for the oil contingency that's in the, uh, in the budget? We think it's appropriate?
Are we good with it? No. Do we have a choice?
We think it buys us two additional weeks, Mr. Verboise? Is that, um?
Yeah, I, I do. I look at the heating season as a 12, two-week period from the end of November to the, uh, beginning of May. And we are just entering, uh, the ninth cycle, so to speak. So we've averaged, I keep my spreadsheets, 200, uh, $2.65 a gallon. Uh, I know in the last week they really spiked, so we're hopeful we're not going to need much oil and hopefully spring is here. Um, but, um, yeah, there's always that fear. I mean, um, I look back, um, 2012, 13, we averaged $3.37 a gallon. So, um, yeah, we're, we're, we're back. You know, that was 10 years ago, but we're back to those prices right now. But hopefully they're not here long, but we have to plan for it.
And this is an item that we had previously in the budget. You will remember it was taken out two years ago on that same effort to reduce the budget in the beginning of the pandemic. And, and we think it's something that, um, we think it's something that's wise to include here.
I agree.
You, what do you do to try to mitigate some of, like you try to pre-fill tanks?
Well, we get together every, the beginning of every summer and try to top off as many of the tanks as possible in the warmer weather when the price is typically lower, although this year, who knows if it will be. So we try to take advantage of that before the close of the current fiscal year. Um, and then after that, there's just so many variables that we can't control temperature, you know, the average temperatures and so forth. But I would say that the, um, uh, the use of the automated controls helps a great deal, don't you think?
It does, it does. We have to maintain 65 degrees temperature in the heating season. That's, that's a state regulation. So we ideally shoot for 68, 69 degree. The energy challenge will drop it a little. Maybe we'll run that a few months.
I'll bring sweaters in. All right. Are, are we good with the contingency?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Dennis.
All right. Anything else? Thank you. All right, next.
Oh, the cap reserve.
Yeah, the cap reserve. Yeah, I know. We finished the budget and you're doing the next one, right?
Thank you, Dennis.
Yep. Okay. So we're going to talk a little bit about, um, a proposal to extend the existing capital reserve. So, uh, tonight we're going to begin this discussion about the capital reserve to, um, to fund, uh, projects as we move into the future. Uh, the capital reserve fund provides a source of funding for capital improvement projects. The use of the reserve saves taxpayers money by eliminating the need to borrow money at increasingly higher interest rates. Voters have total control over the addition and withdrawal of money from the fund through ballot resolutions. The use of the fund would not impact the annual operating budget. The current capital reserve was first approved by voters in May of 2017. That was, reserve was funded at a level of $12 million and had an original maximum term of 10 years. We estimate that the use of the reserve to this point will save taxpayers approximately $1.5 million in interest costs over the next 15 years, the repayment period had we borrowed the money instead. You can see the substantial list of projects that have been completed using this reserve. The initial projects were started in 2018. Uh, we are proposing tonight the extension of this capital reserve to complete capital improvement projects in the coming years. In an environment of increasing interest rates, we believe the use of the capital reserve will again save taxpayers a significant amount of money. This, uh, this chart is a brief yet incomplete list of potential projects under consideration to be completed using the extended capital reserve. In addition to identifying appropriate projects to be included in the capital reserve, we are asking the board's steering committee to consider the level of maximum funding for the reserve and the maximum duration. Our goal is to have a proposal on the ballot in May for voter consideration. And, uh, we'd be glad to have a discussion about any questions you might have.
Okay. I'll start with Mike.
I don't really have any questions. Um, I, I just will say that, um, this, uh, this approach, uh, that we took, um, going back five years ago, has proven to be extremely successful on so many fronts, from saving taxpayer money to, uh, being able to accomplish projects, uh, in a timely manner. And, uh, we've managed to do that very efficiently as well, thanks to the, um, excellent steering committee and facilities team that we have. So, um, I think it's logical that we would extend this and continue to try to, um, essentially self-finance our own projects, um, in this environment, um, even though we have a tremendous credit rating, uh, which helps us in a lot of areas from borrowing perspective, uh, anything that we can do in-house, uh, so to speak, uh, with our own funds rather than borrowing from somebody else, we should. Just makes, you know, good fiscal sense. So I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Rashmi?
Yeah, I, I have no questions, but I echo everything Mike said. I think it makes sense for us to, um, have the money to be able to do the projects that we'd like.
Cheryl?
I would agree. Um, just when I look at, you know, the top of the list of some of the things that, uh, we as a steering committee, Jackie and I are both on that committee, um, have had to, have been able to accomplish over the past few years. I look at the first two high school gymnasium upgrades. I mean, we were able to host section one, uh, to, you know, the play, the playoffs on, on this past weekend. So, um, that would have been something that we could have never been able to help out the section for. And this was, you know, something that we, we saw a need and we were able to help out section one because the county center wasn't available. So that was really, we have a beautiful gym, state of the art, and, uh, we were able to pitch in where needed. I look at the air conditioning throughout many of the schools, that was definitely needed. We identified that, that there were so many months that the students were there without air conditioning. So, um, as we look into the future and look at some of the projects that we're looking at this point, um, we had highlighted one of them where, you know, some, uh, various upgrades and certainly the guidance suite, different things and different ideas we had. I think it all makes a lot of sense.
Lisa?
Yeah. So, um, I don't disagree with anything anybody has said, but Tom, let me ask you, is there a downside to extending?
No, not, not that I can see. It, it makes perfect sense, especially in this environment where we know interest rates will be rising. Um, we do believe that, I mean, we had, we had some terrific interest rates on some of the, uh, capital projects we had done previously, we refinanced some of them below 1%. Those days are long gone. So I think this makes perfect sense if you have the ability to do it and put money in over a period of years. Uh, I believe that's the number one reason to have this capital reserve. The number two reason, which is probably one and one A, is it allows the board of education to be really nimble to react to the environment that exists currently. Um, I, I think that's worth a, a great deal. So I, I do not see a downside. Dr. Hatter, did you?
I don't, I don't. We, and this is, and just to remind the community, this is a fund that we already have. We've already established this fund and, and with voter authorization, we've hit the maximum. So when you start a capital reserve fund, you have to define two things. How much money you're going to put in it and the duration of the fund?[1709.38] you're going to put in it and the duration of the fund, how many years. So we've exhausted the maximum that we identified five years ago. So do we want to extend it? And it makes perfect sense, and I echo Tom's statements with regard to the financial environment. But in addition to that, in a year in advance, generally, these projects take a long time. And if you're going to go out and bond, not only are the costs higher, but it takes longer to do. And bonding is important and it has its place. However, we can act a little quicker on smaller scope, not a $30 million project or a $40 million project, but on a smaller scope, we can act quicker. And when I look at some of the things we've been able to accomplish with the capital reserve fund to date, we're one of very few districts where I would say that every classroom space, after this summer, when we add to the gym and to the cafeteria, air conditioning, every classroom space will be air conditioned. That is so integral, and we saw how valuable it was during the COVID era when we were able to retrofit all of our filtration with MERV 13 filters. So actually, the gymnasium, I want to say, Dennis, it's not MERV 13, it's even higher than that, MERV 14 in the gymnasium. So we're, we've been able to do that. This facility that we're in was completely redone to give our students a better lunch experience.
Except for the stage.
We'll get to the stage, we'll get to the stage. And we're looking at some other wonderful projects within our schools and, and we have the flexibility to be able to identify those projects. And the steering committee has done so much work and so many hours of design. I'm in awe of the amount of time that you have volunteered to this district. It is just remarkable because the, the, everything that we see is the product of hundreds and hundreds of hours of design time that, that the committee is spending together. So I look at all that we've accomplished and there's more to be done. And the capital reserve seems to make sense extending it. And you do what you can in a given year and you don't fund it fully immediately and you present to the voters the projects that you're considering and you need voter authorization to withdraw the money. And so there's still that element of engaging our community as well.
So can I just follow up? I guess this question is really for Jackie and Cheryl, who are on the steering committee. On slide four, there is a list of about seven items. How does the steering committee decide what project is going to come next?
So one of the things that we have to do every year, oh, every five years is a five year BCS, a building condition survey. And that is done by our architects and construction managers. And it generates a list of things that need to be done in the district, whether they're old and failing, they're in danger of failing, they're not, no longer ADA compliant. And it generates a higher level, which is, that goes up to the state, but then they give us far more detail. Plus, we listen to what staff has to say, what the administrators have to say in there. Ron is very good about asking with the building principals, what do you need? Where do we need to go to help? And it's always on a focus of what's going to make it better for students and staff and what, of course, safety. And so I don't know how long we spent on that five-year spreadsheet. It was a long time. But that, that's helped generate some of the things that we've talked about, some of the higher need things. When you look at, for instance, the guidance suite, okay, you know, that, that guidance suite went in when the buildings were built. Kids don't sit at tables and go through books anymore. There's, there's no, it's not 21st century. There's, there's no way for them to act and, and do what they need to do within a guidance suite that should be more interactive. We look at the East Team Lab and the middle school, that was the old TV studio. Now it's just a room, but it doesn't have all the pieces in it that it needs to become those spaces. Those are the things we, we look at and the reasons for it. So it's just a lot of discussion back and forth and we bring in whoever we need to bring in. And Ron's very good about bringing in principals when we need them.
And it's a give and take because the needs outweigh the resources that are available or the wants outweigh the resources that are available. So you try to make sure that you put your fingerprints on each of the schools as well. And that's important, that we upgraded the cafeteria here, we upgraded the nurses' suite at Mohansick and made some other upgrades there. We upgraded the corridor ceilings, floors and lights at Crompond. We've made some adjustments at the middle school. We're going to be refurnishing that gym this summer. We made an upgrade at the high school. So it's ensuring our students throughout the district are, are feeling the, the effects of the capital reserve that we've established.
Thank you.
And also across genres. So looking at the auditorium, our students in the fine and performing arts, looking at our music classrooms to make sure that we can, there was a conversation that we had at our last meeting, when we look at the acoustical panels in, in some of the music classrooms to improve upon that. And then going into athletics and into the classrooms and making sure that across all areas where we're maximizing our impact.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, you know, to the question of, is there any downside to this? There really isn't in that it provides the district with the maximum amount of flexibility. And in addition to that, if there, if the funds are not available, we don't have to fund the reserve. So it's not, it's not like we're locking anything in. You know, if we say we're going to extend it, just using as a number, another $12 million, that doesn't mean that we're required to come up with $12 million at some point. It just means that we would have the ability to fund up to $12 million if in fact we have the funds available. So it, it gives us flexibility, it doesn't tie anybody's hands. And so there really is no downside.
And it helps us react to the needs of, of the buildings as, as they happen. I mean, if anybody remembers with the Brookside Cafeteria, if anybody's had kids go through Brookside before this, and, and you remember the, the carts that they used to wheel out and, and the kids couldn't even put the trays on it, you know, it, it wasn't a functionable space for them. And, and so it's all about function. We've been here, Mike and I, for 16 years and the difference in what the buildings and the facilities look like from 16 years ago, because we are able to react to the needs. I don't know if you can talk about that.
Sure. And I, I think, I agree wholeheartedly that we've been able to pivot to really important needs. So during COVID, it was the ventilation systems and air conditioning and things of that nature. Those are the types of things that we were able to react to very quickly because we had the reserve available to us. And Mike is absolutely correct. Funding of the reserve will be assessed each year depending on the availability of funds. So I, I think in general, it's an outstanding tool if you have the ability to manage it. And I, I think we've experienced some, we have some great experience over the last five years in doing just that.
And it, and it allows the taxpayer some control because we can't take money out of the fund without their authorization on, on the ballot. And we have been so grateful for our community for supporting all of this, but they do have control. We have to tell them what the project is and they have to authorize the funds before we can start the work. So it is a give and take with the community. Anything else?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Was that it for you, Ron?
Yes.
Next week, I could present to you, I can give some thought, we can give some thought,
maybe even with fiscal advisory or steering, we can give some thought on a duration and a dollar amount. Maybe we can talk about it at the next meeting because I believe by the 21st, we have to have something on the board agenda. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to come back next week with some more information on the, or some more recommendations that we can discuss.
Yeah, I think steering should, should help design some of what it should be, but I think fiscal advisory needs to be involved to help come up with.
Frame the email.
Make sense?
Okay.
All right, we're going to go on to the business meeting, business office. Can I have a motion to approve the budget transfers that are listed below?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And can I have a motion to approve the following contracts for health and welfare services provided to resident pupils attending non-public schools in other districts for the 2122 school year?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we have gift, we have a motion to accept with gratitude the following donation, we have $500 in Acme Market gift cards from Jen Youth on behalf of the Acme Markets Foundation and Nourishing Neighbors Campaign.
So moved.
Second discussion?
Go ahead.
Just a question, this is wonderful from, from Acme all the way around, but what do we do with these? How would we use them?
So as we have, so there were specific schools that were cited in the donation and then there were $50 gift cards that were provided to us. So we've allocated them and they're to be used for a celebration with students and with staff. The $50 buying power doesn't go too, too far with regard to what we're able to do with the funds. But certainly, as we have celebrations and we're having more and more in-person celebrations with students and with families, we can certainly use the monies to go toward providing refreshments.
So that's great timing then, with all of our kids, you know, back and unmasked. That's awesome.
It's very generous. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're up to board comments. Lisa?
I just want to say that it's so great to see everybody's faces. Haven't seen everybody in person without a mask on in a long time. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you for the discussions about the Yorktown 100. I think it revives conversations that had happened on this board a couple of years ago. And it's because of community members that, that bring these issues to our attention so that we can look at them as well. So thank you to all of you for coming out.
Cheryl?
I agree. It's nice to see everyone here tonight. And I do remember some of the solar panel discussions we had right when I started on the board. It was probably about six or seven years ago. So maybe it's time to start, you know, as we, we always do, we're always very environmentally friendly as we go through our projects, but maybe it's time to revisit some of the old, the, you know, the solar discussions that we've had in the past. I also wanted to talk about, on Thursday night, I had the absolute pleasure of being able to attend West F's practice night. Our science research department put on a fantastic presentation virtually. I was shocked at how well it went because I really thought to myself, how is this going to work? I'm attending five different presentations and typically you think of the groups and the gym because I typically do it every year, but last year I wasn't there. I'm guessing we probably didn't host it or maybe it was virtual and I missed it. It was so exceptionally done. I think the science department, science research department did an excellent job of organizing it. And I will say, these students are, I mean, really unreal. And some of the topics they've come up with and some of the presentation, their skills are really top of the line. I'm very impressed with their skills, their topics. They range from COVID and, and the effects on mental health to, and I had to write this one down, freshwater, microalgae and morphology. They were at Sparkle Lake, taking water samples. Very impressive group of students and really piggybacking on some of the discussions that we had tonight about energy conservation and environmental issues, they, that was at the forefront of really most of their presentations. So I commend them, I wish them much luck, and I really thank the department for having me as a guest judge at night. It was an absolute pleasure. The two, two hours went by so quickly, I was ready to do another two hours if I would have had the opportunity. So thank you and all the best to them.
Rashmi?
I'm good. It's just good to see everyone and all the smiles and the faces. So good to see everyone. Thank you for coming out.
Mike?
Yeah, I agree with everything that was said so far and it is great to be here. I'd also like to thank our community members that came out tonight and spoke. It was important to hear from them. And I also want to thank our community members in general who have, even though there have been some hot topics over the last couple of months and years even, we've, we've really been able to maintain a very civil conversation and discourse and I really truly appreciate that. And thank everyone who comes out and supports that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I can echo everything people said. I'm grateful when the community comes out and speaks because if we don't hear from you, we can't react. And I know we don't react to you right away, but it doesn't mean we don't have the discussions afterwards. And, and we do. And our purpose of listening is if we're trying to respond, we're not hearing what you're saying. So we're just listening without trying to form a response. So, and I'm grateful to everybody's respect. I'm grateful that our kids are back unmasked and I'm grateful to the kindness and compassion that everybody's showing to each other with no issues with the unmasking. So that's, it just shows what a great district this is and I'm just so proud to be a part of it. Ron, Lisa, Tom, anything? So we're going to go on to our last public comment. Since it doesn't look like anybody new came in, I'm not going to read my speech again because I think you all know the rules. I'm just going to say that our second public comment period is 30 minutes in length. Each person will have the opportunity to speak to up to three minutes and the board may choose to extend this comment period by a majority vote. I only have two people, so that's not going to happen. We're going to start with Janet Garamillo.
It is essential that the public's voices are heard and I wanted to show my appreciation to the board for keeping these meetings civil, respectful and organized and also extremely informative. Thank you very much. I support the initiative to decrease Yorktown Schools' carbon footprint in any way possible. Yorktown 100's work is hugely important and I am excited about the prospect of utilizing solar energy and looking into electric buses and school vehicles with input from a possible task force. Thank you for filling us in on the progress the district has already made towards a smaller environmental impact. I'm looking forward to hearing more about how we continue that conversation. I have spoken at a previous meeting about the books that are under review. Thank you, Dr. Hatter, for touching on that. I'm glad that the books have remained in the library up to this point. I want to say, I hope that the determination is that all of the books remain in the library for the kids who need them. And I mean that. Students who could relate to the characters and stories and feel understood in those books need them. This is crucial for developing a sense of belonging and these students' mental health. In my opinion, if students can be involved in researching the solar initiative, which I think is a brilliant idea, they can choose for themselves which books to check out of the school library. Yorktown students are so smart. Thank you as always for supporting them and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Katie Schmidt, Fader?
Hello, hi, everybody. It is great to see everyone's faces. It's nice to see everyone's faces, that's what I was saying. I want to thank you so much for your work, especially on the budget. I, my mind, I can't even comprehend how you begin to, all those budget items and meeting after meeting and so appreciative for that work that you all do. I did have a question as far as the capital reserve. I just wondered if it was invested, if it's, I know you can't answer questions, but is it invested in the stock market? Is it just in an interest-bearing account? I just really didn't know, so I was just curious about that. And then I just also wanted to address once again, with gratitude, the way it's being handled, the review of the books. I thought there was wonderful transparency in the way the parents were chosen to participate on the community, on the committee. Dr. Hatter made it very clear, we all knew what was going on, very appreciative of that. The only thing I would be curious about is what the timeline is like, when the decisions will be made and just so that we can move on. I know that additional books have been added to the list, so I also thought perhaps maybe something that could be considered is an annual timeframe in which books can be brought up for review. There's an amount of time, so there's, so it's not just an ongoing query because it's a lot of work for everyone and, you know, maybe this is something that could be done even over the summer when the books can be taken out of the library without a concern. The other thing I just wanted to bring up is the diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives, the culturally responsive, sustaining education outline program that was developed by the state four years ago now. And I'm just really wondering when we're going to get going on that. I think it's important, I think it's so important. We have such a wonderful, diverse community and I want every kid here to feel honored and respected. And I also want our kids to have the education they need. And so I haven't really gotten a clear sense of where that's, where that is right now. I think it would be helpful for us. It is hard to not be able to have a discussion with the board. I don't know how any of you actually feel about that program. And that's kind of frustrating to me. I mean, we get to ask questions here, but we don't get to hear your answers. And even though you go and discuss it afterwards, we don't hear that discussion. So I would like that there, for there to be a way that we can have a discussion about all of this, even in the community. I hate when one group gets up and speaks and the other group gets up and speak, but we don't have a discussion. So I don't know if it's possible. I have attended charrettes, which are, you know, is a planning board sort of structure wherein a community can discuss. I would love if we had something like that in this community. So I'm just putting that out there, if, if it's all possible that we can hear how you feel and we can all discuss at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to answer the, where the money goes?
Yes, 100%.
Do you, do you invest the money in the stock market?
That's a good, that's actually a good question. There are specific parameters around it and it's probably a great time to just remind everybody how that is handled, Tom.
So the, all of the money of the school district is subject to the limitations of board policy with regard to how it's invested. Our investment strategy is no more extravagant than a simple bank money market, a simple interest-bearing account. So we take no risk with the, with the taxpayer money and that's where you'll find it, earning a whopping 0.35%.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor? Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.